Very good. I'd like to welcome today to the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 25th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the roll call, please.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Slocum?
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
President Pine?
Here.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment, and this is a time reserved for individuals who want to address the Board on any county-related matter that is not on the meeting agenda, listed on the consent agenda, or concerns Board member reports on the regular agenda. We have three speakers today, and each speaker has up to two minutes. We have missed, and for the benefit of the audience, since these are not agendized items, they cannot be discussed by the Board. Ms. Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, County Supervisors and staff. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to comment Mr. Pine's presentation at our Democratic Party on the sea level rising. It was an excellent presentation, and I'm just going to go down the line and give compliments where they're due. And we'll start with Mr. Horsley, who's my representative from Pacifica. And when I was trying to get my fraud case investigated in the '90s, 1998, and Jim Fox threw me out of his office three times, it was the Sheriff's Department that told me to put a claim in with the county, which I did, and Mr. Malteby was the county supervisor at the time, and I have his response here, too. Carol Groom didn't have anything particular with my case either way. Dave Pine, he was the chairperson of the charter review in which I was able to get the personnel commission. Andre Antesiar is a disappointment to me because she took a year and a half to respond to me through the county council on an embezzlement charge, but, you know, so be it. At least you started the investigation. And you warned Slocum, when I was going through my divorce and I appealed it, paid the $200, you did write me a letter and say, you know, "Do I want to go get it?" So my attorney says, "No, go get your $200 back because we're going to reopen your case," which they did behind black backdoors with the judges and the lawyers and no recordings. And to this day, I have lost a half a million dollars that I never was able to recover. When I went to Mr. Wagstaff, who is in the audience today, he said I had a civil fraud case. Well, Jackie Spear wanted to know if I had a civil fraud case, why the criminal portion wasn't investigated, and I'm still wondering why. So I'm going to try to reopen my case probably in federal court. But we also got information regarding violations of the business code from Kevin Mullins, and we know where to go with that in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Medler.
Anyway, I want to thank you for letting us speak before the meeting. That's a little more respectable than what we get around our town. Anyway, I want to thank Mr. Beers for setting up an appointment with Mr. Silberman, and we hope to be following up on that today. And we don't want everything, come up here and speak bad about everything, so I just wanted to compliment you on the help you've been, and hopefully we can come up with some results from that meeting, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medler. And our last speaker is Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Pine, members of the Board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum, and Mr. Malteby, and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county and pledging your allegiance to our republic which guarantees freedom of association for all, even those persons living with serious mental illness who do not believe they are sick and cannot advocate for services that will restore their freedom. Laura's Law assisted outpatient treatment produces positive outcomes, and evidence of the positive outcomes was examined by the United States Department of Justice before it certified assisted outpatient treatment as an effective economical and humane way to promote recovery instead of relapse almost two years ago. Proposed experiments like mental health respite centers may have produced good feelings last year, but nothing close to the evidence that shows implementing Laura's Law is a reasonable, rational, and economical way to produce positive results for those living with mental illness who do not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily, including those who have served their country honorably. Persons living with serious mental illness who do not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily are mentally ill, not stupid. All the assumptions of a policy of indifference and abdication of duty to help the less fortunate stand exposed as intellectually and morally bankrupt when county conservatives do things like John Jacob Derberger did when he stabbed his mother in San Mateo on August 12th, and Daniel Brooklyn did when he molested three children in San Carlos on October 3rd and assaulted a nurse and broke a security guard's leg at the medical center on October 13th, and I'm not even going to talk about what he did in 2010. Failure to acknowledge what is continuing to happen in San Mateo County is revulsive, and continuing to ignore it will be a stain on the collective consciousness of reasonable people who recognize the right to make decisions about treating one's mental illness is one limited by one's duty to help preserve the community's health and safety, and that right is revocable. Adopt healthy incentives for dealing with the threat of untreated mental illness by adopting Laura's Law and reject the fear mongering. Thank you.
That, I believe, concludes our public comment. So we'll now proceed to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. We are removing three items related to the Wheeler Plaza project as they require some further work. Those are items 21, 22, and 45, so those are postponed. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
No, but I will move to accept the consent calendar and set the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor. Aye. All right, very good. Well, I've been very much looking forward to the next item, as I'm sure my colleagues have, which is the presentation on the Big Lift. I see we have a big turnout from the early childhood education community, although you're all on one side of the room, so I don't know if it's going to...
Over there, too.
Oh! I stand corrected. Somewhat embarrassingly so. So I better just turn this over to Supervisor Groom.
Well, thank you, President Pine, and back in, during the period of time when we were doing the Measure A funding, Big Lift was very honored to receive a $10 million, two-year grant of Measure A funds for our initiative of early childhood learning, reading by third grade level. At that day, we said that with that allocation, we would come back with a somewhat of a strategic plan, a financing plan, and a preschool criteria plan. So before I ask Ann Campbell and Erica Wood to give us the presentation, I will just say that we have been on the road with the Big Lift, trying to raise money and trying to create awareness. I think the amount of people here today who are all of our partners in the Big Lift is testimony to that. Michael Garb and Jeanne McLaughlin have completed the preschool criteria guidelines. We have a process just about in place for the awarding of those first preschool grants, and we have formed a finance committee, and we have made a number of presentations to potential funders. So I think we are well on the way to accomplishing most of what we said we would accomplish. And with that, let me introduce my partners, Ann Campbell and Erica Wood, who are going to do most of the presentation today.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom, President Pine, members of the Board of Supervisors, County Manager Malteby, County Council Byers, those of you who are colleagues on the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, representatives from the early care and education community, my fellow superintendents, and K-12 educators. Thank you all very much for your attendance here today, and thank you to the Board for this opportunity to catch you up on where we are with the Big Lift. We've been very busy since last we saw you in last June. And when we met with you in June, you very graciously approved the allocation of $10 million from Measure A funds to go towards the Big Lift, but you gave us a challenge. You actually gave us two challenges. You told us to go back and work on developing a plan for quality preschool for our three- and four-year-olds in the communities where that help is most needed, and you gave us the challenge of looking for matching funds for the $10 million from Measure A dollars. So we've been hard at work since then, and I did want to just catch you up and remind you of the reason for the Big Lift. As the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council has worked on issues confronting children and youth in our county, we became very, very aware of the third-grade reading proficiency scores in our county, and that fully 42% of our kids are not reading proficiently when they leave third grade. And if we look at different subgroups, that goes to over 60% of kids not reading proficiently. And the very grim reality behind that statistic is that 88% of high school dropouts were not reading proficiently when they left third grade. This is simply unacceptable for San Mateo County. Kids need to read well to do well as they move through life, and so the PPLC has launched the Big Lift to address that. Our overall arching goal is to get 80% of our county's third graders reading proficiently by 2020. Obviously, we would like to move to 100% eventually. That plan is built upon four pillars: school readiness, making sure that kids are in school, that parents are engaged, and that kids have inspiring summers. But the whole foundation upon which we're basing the Big Lift is that before kids ever get to kindergarten, they need to have quality preschool experiences as three- and four-year-olds so that they truly are school-ready when they reach kindergarten. So what we would like to do is provide you with our progress points at this point. We are in the midst of working on fundraising. You issued us the challenge of coming up with $10 million in matching funds. We have approached a variety of foundations, business partners, government partners, and have raised over half a million dollars from the Race to the Top Early Care and Education funding. We are in the midst of conversations with SV2, with the Kellogg Foundation, with the Irvine Foundation, and with the Social Innovation Fund that the federal government is looking at to secure additional dollars as well. We also have looked very closely at the funds that are currently allocated in the world of early care and education in San Mateo County, and as we've put together all of those funds, we're realizing that we can leverage about $11 million of already existing funds to use as we're working on the Big Lift. And certainly, we also have the rather daunting challenge of where do we find the $30 to $40 million in ongoing funding that will be required to provide quality preschool for our three- and four-year-olds, and we're continuing to work on that effort. Our second progress point is building community will. And when we began the Big Lift about a year and a half ago, we probably had 25 or 30 members of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council. Our landscape has changed dramatically. We now have a group of more than 40 county leaders who are our strategic advisors, who meet with us every six months to provide guidance and advice. We have a wonderful steering committee of over 30 members from a wide variety of arenas in San Mateo County who provide us with guidance on policy issues that the Big Lift is dealing with. And then we have our wonderful Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council membership, which has grown to over 90 county organizations. We met last week, and the room was completely packed, the largest attendance we've ever had. So it's obvious that the Big Lift is really resonating throughout San Mateo County, and we're involving lots and lots of individuals from the community in the four work groups that are focusing on the four target areas, and we have over 100 people involved in that work as well. As we look at progress point number three, I think one of the main things that we are attempting to do is to bring together organizations that have been operating in isolation to really be working together in a collaborative partnership to make the Big Lift a reality. You can see from the slide that we've held a variety of convenings. As Supervisor Groom mentioned, we've been incredibly busy bringing together different groups of people and have had wonderful response from all of them. We need to continue that outreach to the business community. We're going to be going to the Progress Seminar in April, and we're doing a convening of foundations later this spring. And I know Erica Wood will be up here shortly to talk with you about the Big Lift and where we go from here. But the Silicon Valley Community Foundation very kindly has put forward $50,000 in funding in the hopes that as we bring the foundations together to the convening later this spring, that they will match that $50,000, and it will multiply exponentially to help with the cause of the Big Lift. And then the reason that we're really here today is to share with you the preschool plan that has been developed. Many of the people who are in the audience today have participated since last June in the preschool committee. We had over 40 people consistently attend meetings every other week. Michael Garb and Jeanne McLaughlin did a wonderful job of chairing that committee with the assistance of Normala Dilman from the County Office of Education, and that group looked at best practices, they looked at what San Mateo County's specific needs are as far as providing preschool for our three- and four-year-olds, and they've come up with a plan that very shortly Jeanne and Michael will be sharing with you. We've also, in the course of that work, isolated 11 school districts geographically throughout the county where we believe that help is needed most in terms of making sure that kids are getting a great start as they begin kindergarten by having had a quality preschool as three- and four-year-olds. So I'm delighted to be able to call to the podium Michael Garb and Jeanne McLaughlin, who chaired the preschool committee and who will be providing you with a walkthrough of the details of that plan. Thank you.
Good morning. Our intention was not to create a new preschool model. The plan was to build on existing preschool programs and supports. We will need to establish a baseline for each preschool classroom using the Quality Rating Improvement System, QRIS, framework that Jeanne McLaughlin will be describing shortly. From the assessment, it will determine what assistance and supports each of our preschools need to enhance the quality of their programs. The preschool committee took a look at the QRIS framework, the state QRIS framework, and modified it to be more appropriate for San Mateo County in determining what a quality preschool program would look like here in the county. With that framework, we will have a tool to measure quality moving forward. The plan is to start with a few communities identified earlier, the 11 communities, but we can't start with all of them at one time. We want to build from there each year. Each community will have challenges that will need to be addressed and systems to be put in place to track results. Spreading the resources too thinly will jeopardize success and not be very cost-effective. At the community meetings that will take place and address later in the presentation, each community, whether the lead agency is the school district, a preschool, private preschool provider, a city, or a nonprofit agency, we need to make a commitment, they will need to make a commitment to be collaborative, tear down existing silos that exist, engage parents, and agree to meet the requirements of the plan. The committee work and the plan is based on what we have learned with Preschool for All in Redwood City from 2005 to 2009, our conversations with First Five of San Francisco and their universal preschool program, and the expertise of the members of this committee that met from August through December, twice a month for almost four hours a month, and put in over 600 hours. The plan is composed of evidence-based strategies. We want everyone to be committed to the Big Lift. That means having skin in the game, leveraging all the resources they can bring to the table besides what the Big Lift will bring, engaging the parents, and being accountable for producing results so the children, the three- and four-year-olds, are ready when they reach kindergarten. That is the only way the plan will work. I am pleased to turn over the presentation now to Jeanne McLaughlin.
Thank you, and good morning. The Big Lift will use two powerful strategies to strengthen San Mateo County's preschools. One is to unite the existing preschools in our county that are of uneven quality through the use of a common quality framework, and thereby increase both quality and access in the classrooms that currently exist. The other strategy is to create new spaces that meet the higher levels of quality from inception. This can be done by infilling spaces with current programs or creating new classrooms where none currently exist. Eventually, we will need to meet a growing demand by adding new facilities, but we anticipate that's farther down the road. If you think about the chart that's up right now in quadrants, we're driving towards the upper-right quadrant: more and better quality preschool experiences for our three- and four-year-olds. This looks busy, I know. The San Mateo County Quality Rating Improvement System, or a QRIS, will serve as an overarching quality framework for the Big Lift preschool initiative, ensuring minimum levels of quality is achieved in all settings and incentivizing increasingly higher levels of quality. The framework establishes a uniform set of ratings to assess and improve early learning programs by examining nine key elements of quality on the left column. It's designed to identify and move continuous quality improvement across a scale of five tiers, from a minimal to excellent levels of quality. This Quality Rating Improvement System, with the exception of the two bottom items, which are San Mateo-specific, is being utilized by six Bay Area counties and 17 county consortia across the state as part of the Federal Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Initiative. Systems such as this are also being used in a few dozen states across the nation. Applicant programs to the Big Lift will be assessed both self and external assessments as to their ability to meet the criteria in each of the five tiers, ranging from minimal to excellent. And because we want all of our Big Lift classrooms to meet at least a level of good on the framework, applicant programs will need to meet a baseline requirement equivalent to tier three on the quality framework in order to participate. Programs that don't yet meet the tier three will be offered technical assistance and other resources to help raise their level of quality, and they will become our pipeline for future classrooms for the expansion of Big Lift. Our goal is for the QRIS to inspire and drive continuous quality across the county, and adhering to a framework such as this will help us both evaluate progress over time and ensure accountability. It will also become well-positioned to participate in efforts of growing investments at both the state and national levels. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about the various investments and ways we're going to help preschools. Now I'm out of order. Sorry. In order to help the preschools achieve this third tier to advance and reach higher levels of quality, the Big Lift initiative will provide essential program supports, and wherever possible, the following supports will build on, integrate with, and leverage existing resources. The first is direct financial support to classrooms in order to achieve and sustain higher levels of quality, and the funds that are made available can make possible paid teacher planning and release time, adequate learning materials to meet the levels of quality required, to offset some of the costs for both data and administrative support, and in our new spaces cover the operating expenses, including staffing. High-quality professional development utilizes evidence-based strategies to challenge and scaffold teachers' knowledge and skill. So workforce supports will be a key component of our work, such as working through our community college partnership, textbook loans, and career academic advising. We're also recommending the development of a bachelor's degree cohort because we want our ECE teachers to achieve higher degree qualifications, which will lead them to a sustainable career path. Finally, both research and local practice shows that onsite coaching and mentoring is needed to help teachers apply what they've learned in their classroom instruction to children. Big Lift plans to train a cadre of qualified coaches to deliver one to two visits each month in classrooms. Because the metric for success in Big Lift is a third-grade measure at reading proficiency, there will be an emphasis on enhancing age-appropriate activities and curricula that support early literacy, both at home and in classrooms. And in addition, because we know early math skills are a great predictor of later reading proficiency and academic success, we'll have a second curricular focus, which will be to improve, deepen, and sustain early math instruction. Oops. You know what? I got out of, I got out of order. I apologize. They all look the same at this point. I want to talk about the facilities. I skipped ahead. Improved facilities and healthy learning environments for children are going to require funds and partnerships for facility improvements and improvements to our existing classrooms, startup funds to furnish brand-new classrooms. It means that programs can assess their facility quality, eliminate asthma triggers, environmental toxins, ensure good lighting and ventilation, and have great playgrounds that also serve as outdoor learning environments. Now, you've also seen, you've already seen four, so we're going ahead. You know, parents are really the one element, the child's first and forever teachers, and the Big Lift can't succeed without engaging families as critical partners in their children's learning. And so we will support programs in both assessing and improving their family engagement strategies and ensure that both virtual pre-K and Raising a Reader, which are two of our hallmark long-term family engagement activities, are present in all the Big Lift classrooms. A majority of the children also are likely to come from homes where English is not the primary language, and achieving quality in ECE settings where such a large percentage of children are dual-language learners can be challenging, especially when teachers don't speak the language, the home language, of the children. To address this, preschool teachers are going to receive training and coaching through our Early Childhood Language Development Institute, which has a proven track record and special expertise in helping programs be linguistically and culturally responsive. And we are waiting on pins and needles for a WK Kellogg grant to come through this week. We're all thinking, yes. Early childhood programs are also ideal settings for the identification of children's developmental delays and other special needs. The earlier those concerns are identified and treated, the better those children will be in the long term. Programs will be required to use a valid developmental screening tool and will be provided with support for dealing with concerns that arise in navigating special education system. Teachers will also have access to training in prevention and intervention strategies for children with behavioral challenges. Assuring that enrolled children have health insurance, health screening, oral, vision, dental, and hearing, nutritious meals, snacks, and ensuring families have access to resources such as CalFresh are going to require us to partner with many of our county organizations and resources. Now, we know there's not enough high-quality preschool spaces in our county to start and meet the need with the children in our targeted Big Lift communities who are most in need, particularly families who are not able to pay the full cost of quality preschool. So in order to increase access to these spaces, we will create new classrooms in target communities, both full-day and part-day spaces, assure that classrooms meet or exceed the basic licensing requirements for facilities, provide funds for materials and equipment in new classrooms, and we hope to re-energize a partnership with San Mateo County Human Service Agency, the Peninsula Rebuilding Together, and San Mateo Building Trades Council in order to provide funds, materials, and skilled labor for renovation of new and existing preschool classrooms. The Big Lift must be dedicated to ensuring that the impact of the investments by raising gains for preschoolers does not fade out over time as they move into and through the early elementary years. At its heart, Big Lift is really a preschool-to-third-grade initiative. We have a measure of success at third grade. The strategy is a preschool strategy, so therefore, working with our K-12 school partners is absolutely essential. A strong transition from preschool to kindergarten, regular sharing of information and data is going to be crucial. Other pillars of the Big Lift, such as reducing chronic absenteeism, offering inspiring summers, and developing authentic family partnerships, are all part of the promise of success at third grade. Now, Michael's going to pick it up from here.
Thank you. As you can see from the chart generated by tracking children who attended the Preschool for All in Redwood City in 2005 through 2009, their performance is much better than children who... who have either attended only one year of preschool or no preschool at all. You can see that on this chart. We need to measure our results in the same way. Through the John W. Gardner Center and the Redwood City Project, they've been capturing these children's progress since they started in the program, and it's been very worthwhile information that we've been able to use. We cannot wait until these three- and four-year-olds reach kindergarten or third grade and measure their reading proficiency at that time. It's just too long to wait. So we're going to require preschools participating in the Big Lift to capture data on each individual child as they progress through preschool and early childhood, the K-12 system, and to track the preschools themselves to see that they're enhancing their quality as we provide all these support services. Independent evaluations will be used for both short and long-term. An example is kindergarten-ready assessment that will be a valuable tool to measure the progress of these children as they move through the system. Our cumulative quality preschool spaces by year. In each year, in year one, we hope to enhance quality of 500 existing spaces in these eleven communities and create 100 new spaces, 60% part-time and 40% full-day. At the end of the year two, we will anticipate having 1,000 existing spaces that have been enhanced and 300 new spaces. By year 2020, we could have as many as 5,600 enhanced-quality spaces and have created 3,000 new spaces in these eleven communities. Keep in mind that the 8,600 spaces account for two years of preschool for both three- and four-year-olds, or half and half of each grade. This is the budget that we have put together for the Big Lift for the first two years. The two-year budget for the Big Lift is approximately $10 million, approximately 3.2 million in the first year and a little over $7 million in the second year. These numbers are based on costs associated with the Preschool for All Project in Redwood City, conversations with First Five in San Francisco, and other early childhood programs operating now in San Mateo County. From this chart, you can see that 50% of the budget is allocated to direct classroom support that Jeannie spoke about. This is the big portion of the budget and where the most money will be used to enhance these programs. The one thing on there that you may not understand is what we call pipeline programs. These are preschools that are in the communities, existing communities, that will not meet the minimum requirements at Tier Three to join the Big Lift initially, but we will provide support to these preschool programs so they raise up their level at least to Tier Three so they can join the Big Lift in future years. We talked about a leveraged money, funds that have been identified, and that was $11 million that we've identified so far. A big portion of that is from federal and state preschool funds that are already existing and that are provided to the county preschools. First Five provides bridges to success funding, approximately $100,000 in these areas. First Five, the Equip Program, which is now operating out of the county office, is about $686,000. And the Race to the Top, that was mentioned earlier, is about $80,000 that will be used for these eleven communities. Please keep in mind that this plan is based on what we know now. As mentioned earlier, new legislation could change the early childhood landscape, the population continually moves in the counties, and other communities might join in the Big Lift based on future test results. The plan is well-thought-out and can be modified as needed. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Erica Wood from Silicon Valley Community Foundation.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Good, good. So you've heard about what the preschool plan looks like and how much it will cost. So the next set of questions are, where will the work begin and who's going to be first? So we need to design a community selection process, and the Community Foundation is proposing to do that work. We do have experience designing selection processes such as these that involve multiple sectors and collaborative efforts, so we're very pleased to be able to offer that assistance. As Jeannie and Michael mentioned, there are eleven target communities that we're looking at with reading scores below the county average, so that's where we want to begin the work. And in terms of a process, we have not predetermined which communities will step forward to be the early pioneers and the early implementers. So we want to design something that's fair and transparent, that will kick off with a couple of information sessions that will hold in different places in the county, and the purpose of those information sessions will be to provide background information on the Big Lift, as well as what the application is going to look like. And there will need to be an application. We don't want it to be an overly burdensome application, but we do want communities to make a commitment. Because as Jeannie and Michael both said, this is not a K-12 effort separate and apart from preschool, and it's not a preschool effort separate and apart from K-12. So we really want to see that communities are willing to step up and have those partnerships in place with the preschool community and the K-12 community. So we'll do all of that in the information session. We'll ask communities to submit an application, and then we'll be putting together a selection committee that will consist of leaders from throughout the county, but leaders in communities that aren't part of the eleven that we've targeted for participation in this effort. And I can say more about that if there are questions. Okay, now I'm going to do this, and it's going to work. Good. Okay. And so, when we think about this work and investing in our kids, it's the right thing to do from a moral perspective and a social perspective, but increasingly, we need to recognize the economic perspective that's at play here. And so, we thought this quote from Rick Stevens, who was a 33-year executive with Boeing, was particularly apropos, because he really got the critical connection between business and education. And he said, "We need to start early, even before kindergarten, to nurture children's natural curiosity. It's a first step in creating the skilled workforce that allows the U.S. to compete globally." So, you know, when I think about the time when all of us are gone in this room, what's the legacy we want to leave behind? Do we want to leave behind that we've left 42% of our kids, that's almost half, behind and not reading proficiently? Or do we want to be the group that does something about it? I think San Mateo County stands ready to do something remarkable, and that something is called the Big Lift. And as we've talked to different groups throughout the county, we've said it's going to require big thinking, big commitments, and big changes. But if anybody can do it, San Mateo County can. And I just want to conclude by thanking the Board of Supervisors for the vision and the support for getting this started. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Very, very comprehensive presentation, and the materials provided were excellent as well. We have one public speaker, and so Amy Wooliver might want to address us, and then I'm sure the Board will have questions and comments for the presenters.
Good morning. My name is Amy Wooliver. I am the superintendent at Lahana-Pescadero Unified School District and a longtime Coastside resident, a resident of Half Moon Bay. So while I'm now the superintendent of the school district, I want to stand here today as a former Pescadero Elementary School kindergarten teacher and first-grade teacher over 20 years ago. And in between that, I've probably done every job in that district. In 1991, I entered my first classroom in Pescadero, and I was a product of the public schools over here on the peninsula. And I was struck by how different my new community was from what I was familiar with. Imagine raising children with no parks, libraries, playgrounds, supermarket, or any conveniences at the ready. It was a huge shift for me. My students lived in shared housing, trailers, apartments, and isolation, both geographically, culturally, and socially, was staggering. But I was also struck by how much our children knew. They knew about the land, they knew about ecology, probably more about ecology than I will ever know. They came from intact, supportive families, and they were eager to learn. They had big dreams of being doctors, firefighters, good mothers, scientists, teachers, and of course, farmers. I was and still am, we all are accountable and responsible for helping them achieve these dreams. And we need to mold and model and shape their success. But to be successful in this, children of under-resourced communities and families need more. They need more experiences, they need more exposure to quality education, quality teaching, quality learning. They need more language, and they need more excellence. And they need it early. That's my main point. They need it early. California schools, Lahana-Pescadero, we have a stubborn achievement gap, a gap between our students who are proficient at reading in third grade and our students who are not. A gap between children who have all the educational...
Take a couple more.
I'm sorry. I had practiced it, it was two minutes. I'm trying to slow down my speaking. Who have the benefits of our beautiful county and those who do not. And I'll kind of skip around a little bit, but we know that all the children in our county do not have the benefit of being raised by college-educated or high-school-educated parents. We know that we have children that don't have access to safe housing, books in the home, nutritious food in their refrigerators. And we know that this gap, if it's not closed, impacts those dreams of those children. But we also know that high-quality early intervention can mitigate all of these risks. And so, I'm here today in support of the Big Lift. I think it's an incredible program. I love the presentation, and the passion behind this is huge. And so, I thank you, Board of Supervisors, the PPLC, San Mateo County Office of Ed, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, for taking the lead on this project, because investing early in our children is the smart thing to do.
Thank you for your comments here, Perspective Ed. Very helpful. So I turn to my colleagues for questions and comments.
Just to make a comment, especially after Amy just spoke about the South Coast. I also want to acknowledge Mary McMillan in the office, in the audience back there. Mary is involved with Puente, which actually does a lot of services that Amy was talking about for children, essentially, of farm workers. And, you know, I just think that this is really timely, and I'm really so proud of the work that you're doing, Supervisor Groom, and you should be really proud of this, the work that all of the people are doing, all of the audience members and First Five, Silicon Valley Community Foundation. It's really, you know, it's really a wonderful thing that we're able to do, fortunately, because of that Measure A. Just quick stories. I was a third grade, I taught third grade one time in my career in summer session. One of my little boys ran out to the field and stuck his finger down a gopher hole and was bitten by a gopher. In case, I know a little bit about third-grade reading.
Don, was that back in the one-room schoolhouses?
That was a what? That was. But the other thing is, when I was the sheriff, we used to say that you could look at the kids in third grade, and you could see who's going to end up dropping out and who potentially is going to end up in the criminal justice system. So it's not just, you know, this is, in the long run, is going to save us in terms of less crime, more productive economy, more productive citizens. It's just, I can't say enough about, I think, the good that will come out of this project. So I want to commend everyone that's been involved in this. I think the program is just really well-thought-out and well-designed.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, President Pine. I don't know if I can top that gopher story. Let me just say that, sitting up here, you can feel the passion in the room for the Big Lift, and it's just amazing how much work you've all put into this. I thought the presentation was excellent, well-thought-out, answered a lot of questions, and for all of you that had a hand in that, congratulations, and certainly recognition to Supervisor Groom for her leadership in this issue. I did have a quick question. One of the speakers talked about teachers who didn't speak Spanish, for instance, for those dual-language kids. And I was curious how, if a teacher didn't speak Spanish, how they were going to bridge that gap between home and school and Spanish and English? And that wasn't quite clear, so maybe you could just talk about that for a moment?
That was me that said that.
Okay. Thank you.
Wow, that's a big question. And one of the strategies that I did say we would be using was working with our Early Childhood Language Development Institute. There are many, many children in our schools at all levels that come into the system who are monolingual, non-English speakers, and teachers are working with those children every day. I think it is a set of supportive strategies with regard to helping both teachers understand the process of language development, how to support both the child's first home language and the language they're acquiring, English, as well as respecting their home culture. So we're working, we have to work with families, we have to work with teachers, and we have to understand the process of language development. And with a goal also, I think, to ensure that we have many teachers in our early childhood settings who do speak the home language and are the home cultures of the children we serve in San Mateo County. So making sure that those teachers get their degrees at the colleges. I know our community college is at Canyatta, is a Spanish-serving institution, and does a phenomenal job with our Spanish-speaking ECE students. So it's, I don't know if I have a direct answer for your question, but it's a series of strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That helps. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. When you mentioned there's about 11 areas of concentration up and down the county of where you're going to look at doing the Big Lift, I assume that QR, if I can read it, QRIS entry point hasn't been done in any of those areas, and that's, so you'll, once you prioritize the different areas, you would go and then do that sort of evaluation? Or are those evaluations already done, and that's why you have 11 priority areas?
The selection of the communities was actually separate from the QRIS. The QRIS is a framework that will apply to looking at the quality. The communities, if you're asking about how were the communities selected, that came from looking at where were each of these school communities at with regard to their students at third-grade reading proficiency. So the communities were selected because their students were at or below the average in reading proficiency at third grade on their last set of STAR tests.
Okay, then you would apply for those schools the QRIS to see where they really are, and whether you just give them some assistance to get them to a certain level, or they're already Tier Three and above?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the preschools that apply, we will use the QRIS framework and support them. And we're fortunate that we've got Race to the Top connection right now, so we're starting that process early.
I think, obviously, I think this is terrific. It struck me that, you know, there may be another group in Daly City to sit down and talk to. The DCP LA is a Daly City Public Library Associates, and they raise money and provide resources and books and things to our libraries in Daly City, but they'd be a good group, maybe as a fundraising opportunity, to help connect within the North County, so to speak. I know Ann, believe it or not, I was actually watching the library commission on TV, and Ann made the presentation that night, so I saw that presentation there, and I was very impressed. It's nice to see everybody get around, because I think if our library commissions in this group sees and hears what's going on, there may be, you know, some good connectivity. And I'll work with Carol, and maybe someone could come to the next board meeting, or a future one anyway, and talk a little bit about this and see if there's some way we can connect there for the North County.
Adrienne, I assure you that when given an invitation, we arrive.
That's for sure.
Great. Well, you've all done a great, great job.
Do you want to speak? I have a few things, yeah. Well, this is an area of great interest of mine, as a former seven-year school board member and parent and First Five Commissioner, and so I've been tracking this and very excited by all the progress that has been made. This is really wise use of public money. So I had a couple comments, a couple questions. You know, one thing, you know, just to point out, it's just so stunning, is, you know, the opening comment that, you know, we live in a county that we're in the top 1%, top 1% of wealth, but we have 43% of our children that can't read at grade level. And that is largely a reflection of the incredible income inequality in the country, which is growing more and more severe. And unfortunately, San Mateo County is really a poster child for income inequality. So I am pleased that we're trying our best to give people a chance by investing in kids... So I am pleased that we're trying our best to give people a chance by investing in kids. The collaboration is just, it's just incredible. I mean, we always talk about the collaborative nature of Samhitaught County, but what we've seen here is, it's unimaginable that any economy could rival it. And my hope is, is that when monies do become available, particularly through the federal government and Obama administration's focus, that this work will, you know, position us very well. Because this is, you know, a collaboration without equal. I really like the focus on quality. I mean, one thing I guess I've learned in watching all this is how, you know, simply creating a spot for a child is not enough if it's not a high-quality spot. And then we do have, you know, preschool for lower-income students today, and inequality is what makes the difference. And I also like the idea of trying to connect these kids and families to services, you know, particularly, you know, the affordable healthcare and other services that are offered by the county. You know, we're not really doing a community school per se at these preschools, but, you know, anything we can do to link these kids and families to these broader services will make everything more successful. So two comments on funding and then I did have a couple of questions. The proposal has, in the first two years, has a small number of new spots suggested in year one and then a slightly increased number in year two. With any new spots, I feel that we really need to be 100% sure that we can fund it for at least five years. Because I, we had the unfortunate situation before when we rolled out preschool in Redwood City where, you know, we knocked the cover off the ball for two years and all money went away. And so I, you know, I think the investments in quality, while, again, those need to be sustained over time, you know, if for some reason, you know, monies didn't come together, you know, it's one thing to stop investing in quality, but I just think it'd be unfortunate. I hope, I don't want to see a situation where we start a program and it's just two years and it ends. So that's kind of something that's in the back of my mind. And then, you know, on this long-term, long-term funding of 40 million annually, I think it's evident that, you know, that kind of number is going to require, you know, substantial assistance from, you know, the states, the feds, or some local tax measure or school district participation. And again, my hope would be that we get something, we roll out something that, you know, we can afford for, in the short term, and then these monies will become available. And I think there's a good probability of that, you know, given the real, the national conversation now about preschool. But I don't, but we won't, we won't be able to do 40 million annually without, without those, that participation. All right, so anyway, those are my big comments. On funding, just maybe just a couple of clarifying questions. On the Race to the Top funding, I heard Superintendent Campbell say that 500,000 had been secured, but I think someone else mentioned 80,000. Could, can you clarify, like, do we have monies in hand from Race to the Top?
I noticed the same difference. And when we were talking about calculating our leveraged funds, we were being very conservative and really focusing on just how much we believed we might be putting into of Race to the Top dollars into the first one or two communities that might roll out. So the grant from, for Race to the Top is $550,000. But we were thinking about of that, which might be countywide, how much might be directed into a subset of those classrooms. And that was, we don't know because we're not doing it yet, but we were being conservative. So that's the difference between those two numbers.
Okay. And if I could ask the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, how's the matching program work? Wasn't quite clear on that.
So the thinking is that we are the first philanthropic dollars into this effort and that that will encourage other foundation partners to contribute. And we hope that those foundation partners will contribute at least 50,000 and potentially more. So we're going to use it as a challenge to spur our foundation colleagues to join the effort. And we'll be targeting private foundations and smaller family foundations so that 50,000 was a well-considered number for match purposes.
So you'll match each of those or you're just going to make the kind of this?
We're going to start, we're the seed investor, if you will.
With the 50K.
Yeah, to get the rest of the foundation colleagues to join us.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm really excited, that's a critical meeting that you have slated.
Yeah.
And I think we'll have some good results from that. So kind of a broader question on the funding then is, when we first approved this, and as was mentioned by Superintendent Campbell, you know, we're looking for these matching funds. But, you know, the timing of that is kind of, seems uncertain. So kind of just process-wise, you know, how are we going to proceed? Like, and it's kind of a question for the board, too. Like, you know, do we, do we release the money for year one only when we have a $3 million match? Or, you know, I personally would be willing to release it without the $3 million match, but, I mean, maybe, again, it's something that...
I'll start, if I may. I think, you know, we've had some very positive meetings with potential funders. We are submitting a number of grants to potential funders. And we are always looking, I think that Erica's notion of the convening of local foundations will be very fruitful. We're applying to the Irvine Foundation, we've applied to the Kellogg Foundation, we had a very positive meeting, we believe, with Silicon Valley Two, which is a Silicon Valley funding group that specializes in education. That, we have plans to continue to submit grants. We have plans to continue to look at the business community. Our strategic advisors is co-chaired by Lenny Mendocca, who, very solid credentials in the business community. As one of the slides indicated, this is really about partially a workforce. And so we think the business community will join us when they understand much more about this and when we begin to have results. I view the fundraising as completely long-term. As long as we are in the Big Lift business, we will be fundraising. And we will begin to have statistics that show that this program is paying off. So I look, as far as releasing the money, if we are able to, we intend to begin this at the next school year, so we will need dollars, especially for facilities and for teacher training.
And I would just also like to respond to that. I think as Supervisor Groom so eloquently said, the Big Lift continues to be a work in progress and will evolve as we move forward. But this is an incredibly exciting time right now in the world of early care and education because we have the interest of the county board of supervisors locally, which is phenomenal. But we also certainly have at the state level and the federal level, lots of discussions going on right now. So I think we're going to be incredibly well-positioned as we move forward to be qualifying for some of those alternative funding sources. So my sense is, if you were comfortable with it, as Erica mentioned, we need to go through our screening process and get our first couple of districts teed up and ready to go. And at that point, we would have a much better sense of how we would like to access the dollars that you allocated and we would be glad to come back to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I mean, you're eager to get, to roll some things out. And it sounds like some of these funding sources, I do believe, are going to come and be successful. A couple of questions about the program. You know, with all the talk at the state level about transitional K expansion, you know, how has that kind of impacted our thinking? I personally don't think that will pass this legislative session, but it could, if the economy stays strong, it could the next session. So, you know, how do you kind of factor that into our plan?
It's a very good question. I think that where we are with transitional kindergarten is if it were to become a reality, obviously, it's staged over the next couple of years, so it doesn't happen like that. The involvement of the Big Lift with TK would be working with our K-12 partners in the quality aspect of those TK classrooms and with the private preschool providers who might also be providing TK. I think what it would do is it would free up dollars that we could then move into the three-year-old population and expand the access to preschool for that group of kids. But it's, you know, it's, who knows what will happen with the TK legislation?
Yeah, but it would only cover four-year-olds.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, right. And as we know, you can't start this early enough. Just, I guess, two more questions. You know, another interest of mine is the special needs community and, you know, just read through the text on that, and it talks about doing an assessment of children for special needs, the so-called Ages and Stages questionnaire. And it states that it would be encouraged but not required to do that. And I guess I was wondering why you wouldn't just make that part of the program kind of right, right from the beginning. Whoever would like to field that?
Well, as part of the QRIS, which is, it does require it at one of the levels. So it isn't required as part of it at the initial levels, but I believe tier three and above, it does require the use of the Ages and Stages questionnaire. First Five, Samhitaught County has put a huge amount of investment in getting the use and acknowledgement of the ASQ. The Watch Me Grow Project, I believe the ASQ is now available countywide through that work. It's a wonderful screening tool and when used appropriately between teachers and families can really help identify and connect to resources at the early identification level. So it is both encouraged at the lower levels of the QRIS, but required at the higher levels.
If I, maybe I'm confusing two tests, but I thought I heard recently that maybe this test was even being put online. I don't know if it's the same test. So, I mean, I have to defer to your professional judgment, but, you know, I just wonder whether you could just require it right in the beginning. But again, I defer to you. Because again, it seems like a simple, straightforward test, and the earlier you identify these kids, the better. But I defer to your judgment there. So my final comment, it's really a comment, maybe not so much a question, is it's also noted in the document that the team has been thinking about whether or not some of the Big Lift money should go to pay for these crazy state preschool low-income program fees. You know, hopefully they're going to go away. You know, we've actually, you know, have a statement in our legislative agenda that we want those to go away. But from what I've, I guess I've heard a couple of times at the Child Care Partnership Council that this is deterring a lot of kids, a lot of families from going to school. And someone may have to correct me, but I think it may even be creating some vacancy. So, you know, if to the extent that is the case, you know, these are like, what, five bucks a day or something? You know, I think that's, you know, warrants some investigation. Maybe the question is, maybe just for clarification, are those fees actually creating any vacancies or am I mistaken about that?
What I'm hearing is that in their, the state-funded programs that are now being required to charge families fees, as you're speaking of, many of them are really struggling more than they have in the past with enrolling families and keeping them in those spaces. Because these are very low-income families and even just a few dollars a day does make a difference as it piles up over the year. So we've, we've had a lot of discussion in the Big Lift working sessions about the issue of fees.
Yeah, again, it may be a great way to leverage a small amount of money to get a kid in preschool. Well, again, I want to commend my colleague Supervisor Groom and everyone in the audience that's worked so hard on this. It really is just a remarkable effort, remarkable collaboration on something that I can't think of anything more important, frankly. So I'm excited to support it and I'm glad we've made so much headway.
And I think the Big Lift team would like to thank everybody who came today. You have all been phenomenal in helping us, attending all the meetings, putting in great suggestions, helping to craft all of the documents, especially the preschool plan that Michael and Jeannie led. And we wouldn't be anywhere without all of you. And so the next time we come back to the Board of Supervisors, we hope to double the size of the crowd. And that's, that's our goal, is just to keep growing. And so, and I want to, on behalf of all of us, thank you to my colleagues especially for your support.
Okay, I think that completes that item. You're free to stay and listen to other items. I mean, Supervisor Tissier watches the library commission, come on.
Thank you.
You must have really been, must have had insomnia.
Well, you know, I just got off the DCP LA board for the library association, so Susan was over at my house.
Oh, yeah.
For some reason, she turned it on because she wanted to see something on there. Who shows up in the end, Campbell?
They have done incredible outreach. It was nice to see this thing.
We have been living in Daly City. I think I've been to three meetings up there. Sort of like little buffet suppers and talking. Because Pat Bone is really pushing this thing.
Yeah.
So we're trying to support her as much as we can.
Well, that's great, but the Stacey Project just struck me today.
I'll call Susan B.
I just got on the board, that's why it struck me. We're raising money, we're having to say thank you.
Okay, at 1:30 today, we will have the presentation of our service awards. We will all be there. Our next item this morning is a public works item. It's a series of recommendations on no parking zones and other traffic-related matters. So, Mr. Porter.
Supervisor Pine, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. This item is actually the annexation of the parcel for our sewer district.
Yeah, I skipped right over that.
But we'll tee that one up. The item before you today is to hold a public hearing to hear any and all protests on an annexation so that our Emerald Hills Sewer District can provide service to a parcel in that area. The Health and Safety Code requires this public hearing. To date, we have not received any protests. Staff is recommending approval of the annexation. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Okay, well, this item does require a public hearing, so I'll open the hearing. I do not have any speaker cards on the item, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Owen, favor? Okay.
Aye.
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 Then, Oyster's comments, we can have a resolution.
I will move to, I guess, approve the annexation of the lands of 477 Hillcrest Way, Redwood City, into the Emerald Hills Sanitation or Sewer Maintenance District.
Second.
We've got a motion to second, Owen, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then, as has been previously introduced. Street Matters, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, President Pine. We have a brief presentation for you that will queue up right here and we'll get, we'll get right to it. All right, thank you. So the item before you is to consider five different modifications of traffic regulations in the county. The first item relates to a no parking zone on Alpine Road underneath I-280. This is an area where we just put in new green bike lanes. We had requests from the bicycling community to put in a no parking zone there so that folks don't stop in the bike lane and block the bike lane, particularly on the weekends when bicyclists are using this area the most. Items two and five relate to the intersection of Edgewood Road and Scenic Drive and as well as a bike lane in that area. The photographs you see here are Edgewood Drive looking, actually towards the bay, which would be eastbound, at the intersection with Scenic Drive. It's a little hard to see, but those red circles there show turn restrictions, no left turn between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. Those have actually been in place for quite some time, I'm told, since 1998. However, we have had requests from law enforcement to look at the ordinance code for this. And in our searches, we were unable to find documentation that your board had approved this restriction. So in order for public safety to inform, or excuse me, enforce these turning restrictions, we need to essentially memorialize this restriction within our regulations. So that is what that item is before. So that is what that item is before you. Item number five relates to the bottom photo, and that is the bike lane. You can see in this photograph, we have a red bike lane. We actually put that in several years ago before the state adopted green as the standard. But what happens in this location is when traffic is fairly busy on Edgewood Road, vehicles have a tendency to pass people that are making a left or during off-peak hours, park in that bike lane. And what that does is that forces bicyclists out into the roadway, which is a less-than-desirable situation. So we're recommending that a no parking zone be put in at that location near the intersection so that bicyclists, excuse me, can have full use of that bike lane. And what you see here basically reiterates what I've said. We could not find an ordinance for the regulation on the turn restriction. And with the bicycle lanes, we do need to put up some signs. Although the vehicle code does restrict motorists from traveling in a bike lane, unless there's a sign there, a lot of motorists aren't as familiar with the vehicle code as perhaps the traffic engineers in our office are, or public safety. So it's a good reminder to the motorists. This graphic shows you that during the day, even with the sign, these are turning movement counts at the intersection. The day that we took these counts, we still saw five vehicles during the peak period in the morning making that left turn. And what that does is that essentially blocks up Edgewood Road for those people that are trying to get into Redwood City. And this is really the reason why we need to be able to enforce this, so that public safety can get in there and make sure that folks aren't blocking Edgewood. The next item is to reestablish a no parking zone. We got a request from the resident at this location to paint this no parking zone or repaint it. And when we get those requests, we go back and we look at our records to see if it was actually established. And we could not find a record of this no parking zone. So since it has been there for a while, we want to come back and essentially legalize the no parking zone so that it is enforceable by public safety. And then item number four, this is up in the unincorporated area near Daly City at the Bart Station. These red zones have been in place for quite some time. We have had requests from law enforcement to repaint them. And we went through our process again and looked for documentation as to the establishment of those no parking zones. Those could not be found. So we're coming back to your board to approve the documentation necessary for us to go out and paint these red zones. The reason for these red zones is the roadway is somewhat narrow. We don't want cars parking in these locations and we've got a lot of bus traffic out there. So you really need the full width of the road to carry the traffic. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you just have a comment on the left turn at, on Edgewood at Scenic? The reason that, well, it was the sheriff's barn, we had it painted, is because there is a crossing guard that is right at that intersection. And unfortunately, people do tend to go around the people making a left-hand turn and we didn't want to have the crossing guard get hit by a car. And so we thought that that people would be more familiar with the vehicle code and realize that that is a bike lane and you're not supposed to drive in a bike lane, but unfortunately, I've seen many people do that. So that's the reason it was painted and that's certainly the reason that there is a no left turn there, is that people do, they circle around and kids are crossing at that intersection and there's also a crossing guard at that location as well. So I would be, I'd like to, I'd make a motion to pass the resolution authorizing the establishment of one, two, three, the no parking zones and Alpine and Stanford Avenue and DNF Street and unincorporated Coma. And I guess there'd be a separate ordinance for B.
You can do it one motion or two motions?
Hold on, I'll make the full motion for the full A through B and the B part is the introduction of the ordinance adding section 7.08, point 110, et cetera.
Here we have a motion to second, very efficiently done. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move to a county manager report, which consists of three elements. First, we have a county budget update, followed by the legislative session update and county manager's report.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm pleased to be able to present to you our mid-year budget update, as soon as I get the clicker. The recommendations in the report today are to accept the update, including the budget assumptions, which I will discuss in a moment, to approve our fund balance policy, which really puts into writing the policies that have been adopted by the board in the last year or so, to approve a resolution providing for certain transfers, which I will discuss in a few moments, accept our Proposition 172 Maintenance of Efforts Certification, to adopt a resolution authorizing a transfer in the amount of $2 million for the interoperable, easy for me to say, radio communications project previously approved by the board, approve a resolution amending the agreement with Handsay Consulting for continued work, and to accept the San Mateo County Saves update, and to authorize us to go through a second round of proposals relating to the update. I'm pleased to report this morning that the county's financial condition continues to improve as the economy continues to recover. And in fact, this slide is a pretty good illustration of the recovering property tax in the county. As you can see, between 2012 and 2013, a significant number of properties have been restored or are in the process of being restored to full value, thus increasing our property tax. Again, another indication that our property tax is coming back, the number of appeals is declining, and we would expect that this trend line would continue into the future. We have maintained our reserve at 20% in the budget, as you can see, in general fund and actual numbers, really for the last seven or eight years, we have maintained total reserves at around $300 million, which is an exceedingly strong financial position for a county to be in. And of course, we've maintained through Standard and Poor's and Moody's our AAA bond rating, which we're pleased is the only county in California that has established and retained that rating over a number of years. In the long run, what this means is not only a reaffirmation of the board's policy regarding finances, but it also results in reducing our borrowing costs as we look at borrowing for the main jail and potentially other projects in the future. For the non-general fund, our fund balance is dropping, but that really is good news in the sense that it recognizes that we're completing at a faster rate many of the capital expenditures and projects that have previously been approved by the board and thus have not been carried over into our projections for 2015. So kudos to Public Works, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few moments. In terms of our projections, I would classify our revenue projections for the next five years as having moved from conservative to the conservative moderate range. And looking at 1415 through 1819, we're estimating an overall revenue growth of between 2.7 and 3.1%. Property tax, which of course is our major source of revenue, as you can see in the next chart, is growing, going to grow at about 3.5% a year. We think that's relatively conservative, given the restoration, the rate of restoration of property, but we think it's a prudent measure. Also, I would note that we would, we are continuing the assumption of $40 million in excess ERAF. I'll talk more about that in a couple of moments. In terms of Measure A, we're estimating a moderate growth of 3% to 4% over the next five years in those special sales tax funds. And in terms of the public safety sales tax that we receive, we're estimating about a 3% growth rate in that revenue source. In terms of excess ERAF, several things I want to note. Obviously, we continue to receive significant amounts of excess ERAF. But given the continuing evolution of the governor's, and the states now, it's state law, change in funding for school districts, we see an increased downside risk to our excess ERAF as the revenue limit has been raised for school districts, which could certainly produce more basic aid districts, or fewer basic aid districts, which means that there will be less excess ERAF for us to collect. So the, with the concurrence of the Controller's Office and certainly in discussions with Jim, we believe it's prudent to budget the $40 million that the general fund has recognized for the next five years, 40 million a year, and to maintain our policy of any excess ERAF over and above that amount to be unbudgeted in any given fiscal year and thereafter be spent on one-time, one-purpose funds. Something that I would, one of the areas that I think the board should continue to take an aggressive role in, if such funds are to continue to materialize, would be to pay down our unfunded liability in our retirement system. Those are unexpected monies, that's an ongoing liability that certainly affects the bottom line in terms of our ability to finance programs and projects. The more money that we put into retirement, the less money we have for programs and projects. The sooner we pay off that unfunded liability, the more money we'll have for services projects. So I think it really is a win-win and something we should seriously take a look at. I wanted to just go over one more time with the board, the financing schedule for the new jail. Beginning on March 5th, the Joint Powers Authority will approve the initial financing structure. Those documents are then submitted to the rating agencies for their review. On the 25th, they will come back to the board for your approval of the documents. The next day, going on to the Joint Powers Financing Authority for their approval of the final documents. The rating agencies then will review and establish ratings for this particular project on March 27th. We will know what those are on April 4th. On April 9th, the preliminary official statement and internet sale, if you will, or marketing of the bonds begins. The bonds are priced in mid-April. The close will then be on April 30th and the money in hand at that point. Again, to go over the total jail financing costs, we continue in our jail construction estimate at 165 million. As we are now down to the last major bid package, we think that's a good number and that we will bring that project in at or below that estimate. We have included in the bond financing 16 million for land and related costs to repay the costs the county has absorbed up until this point. Those monies would go back into essentially a capital fund that could be used at a later time by the board to pay for future capital projects or to pay down the cost of a capital project. And as you know, we have several major projects in the pipeline that the board might want to consider with respect to that. As part of the funding package, we capitalize the interest between now, when we receive the proceeds of the bond, and when the jail is actually opened. We are required to do that under the terms and conditions of the lease financing documents. There is a reserve that is usually required, we're estimating at about 14 million, we'll know actually what it is at the time of the close. Those reserve funds, unless there's a default, which we obviously don't anticipate, will come back eventually to the board once the project is financed. And then, of course, the cost of issuance, which is about 1.7 million totaling, 215 million, $400,000. To give you some updates on two of the actions that you're being requested to take today, one is really memorializing or codifying, if you will, the fund balance policy. It establishes the 50/50 split that we began last year in the budget, allowing the county to accumulate ongoing funds to pay down the unfunded liability in the retirement system. It provides some more flexibility in terms of allowing departments that have structural budget imbalances, that can't meet the 2% reserve and/or really have structural deficits themselves, to meet those requirements over a period of time while maintaining our policy that departmental reserves can only be used for one-time projects or one-time expenditures. It recognizes and provides, as I mentioned a moment ago, some more flexibility for departments that have fluctuations in their fund balance. Some departments in some years aren't able to attain and maintain the 2%, but other years they have a pretty good fund balance. It allows us to work with those departments so that over time, the 2% fund balance is met. It just simply provides more flexibility. With respect to Administrative Memo B-15 and the Appropriation Authority, it really aligns county policy with the government code that rather than bringing all budget transfers in excess of $50,000 back to the board, for those transfers within fund, within department that do not increase appropriations, they could be handled with my approval rather than coming back to the board. Obviously, anything involving a new appropriation still would come back to the board. Anything that is interfunded nature would come back to the board. But it would, I believe, save some time and also assist departments with their financial planning. In terms of other budget updates, I wanted to mention a few things. One is to go back to two of our old friends, the triple flip and the vehicle license fee swap. By the way, if in any of your casual conversations with friends, if they ask you what's wrong with California financing, you might ask them if somebody came to sell them an annuity called the triple flip or the vehicle swap, if they would buy that. That's how California has been financing their budget now for a number of years. The triple flip, of course, allowed the state to sell the economic recovery bonds by taking local sales tax. It was easier than spending state money. So what they pledged to do was to replace that by taking money from the Educational Relief Augmentation Fund. That works so long as there are sufficient funds in that fund, but as school financing has changed, the amount of funds being available from non-basic aid districts to satisfy that requirement has also been reduced. Similarly, with the vehicle license swap fee, the state determined that it was time to reduce the vehicle license fees in the state. They had two choices, to reduce state vehicle license fees or to reduce local government vehicle license fees. They chose local government vehicle license fees. Then they pledged to return that money, again, from the same funds that they had previously pledged to return in terms of the triple flip. Not surprisingly, there's not enough money left to...
Is this an impartial analysis?
Yes. Jim's going to give the impartial analysis. Not surprisingly, there wasn't enough money left. And again, using the same source of funds, particularly in a county like ours where there are a number of revenue limit districts, that has proved to be problematical in recent years. In fact, in 2011, 12, overall, the county, and when I say the county, I mean in cities as well, were short about $300,000. were short about three hundred thousand dollars. And we are one of three or four counties in the state, by the way, that that's a problem. The state, the following year, backfilled that amount to make us whole. In 2012, '13, that amount from the triple flip is about ten point seven million dollars short. The county's portion of that was about one point nine million. We're now seeking state appropriations for, in the current fiscal year, for our shortfall in the last fiscal year to cover that. And that is part of our legislative program. It continues to be an ongoing struggle. The only good news is that the governor has made, paying off the emergency relief state bonds a priority. When that's done, then that relieves the triple flip. It goes away and those funds come back to local government. And we should be made whole on that point with the caveat that there are times when things like this happen where the state discovers a new need for our local money. So stay tuned for the next chapter in that saga. The governor's budget proposal, we really discussed at the last meeting. It's included as part of this and I'll certainly answer any questions. More or less, it's net neutral to the county, so with a few exceptions. Assuming the governor's budget proposal is approved, we see no significant financial issues with respect to that. As was discussed during the big lift, however, and Supervisor Pine mentioned, Senator Steinberg's proposal certainly could be a source of funding for the big lift. And the governor has expressed his opposition to it. But if the economy continues to prove, I would expect the May revise to be considerably better than the governor's projection. And that may put some real pressure in terms of discussions of the budget between the governor and the legislature. So I think that's still an open question that I'm hopeful might be resolved in our favor. This presentation also includes an update of the capital projects. I just wanted to really give a shout out to Public Works, who has been really doing an outstanding job in completing projects on time and within budget. In fact, of all of the appropriations for county projects, only twenty-eight percent have not yet been completed through the planning stage. And so one of the things that Public Works has done is to update our facility condition index to determine what other county facilities may be in need of some improvements and to bring that list back to the Board in June for discussion of additional appropriations, as well as taking on the park projects and advancing those more quickly than we had originally anticipated. So to Jim Porter and his staff, really, job well done. The Board's appropriations and adding appropriations to the capital staff and Public Works have really paid off. Primarily, they've been agile organization-type of positions, temporary positions, hit the ground running through consultants as well as some temporary people on board and really have gotten the projects cranked out. SMC saves, we've completed the first two point one million dollars. We would like to solicit proposals again and bring those back to the Board. We think that the first round, really, as you can see from the attached list, has really resulted in some ongoing savings and operational improvements and efficiencies to the county. And I'm confident that the second round could also achieve the same results. So we'd like to bring that back to you, the Board, in June for your consideration as well. Mr. President, members of the Board, that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, Mr. Sokol will be pleased to answer them.
Go ahead, Mr. Horsley.
I just had one question on these infrastructure financing districts. Does that require voter approval or is that, is that going to be on the ballot? I know what it does. It reduces the threshold from two-thirds vote to fifty-five percent for certain infrastructure projects. And I think libraries are included in that. Do we know, does that have to go on the ballot or...?
I think that legislation, if it's approved, would enable future proposals that meet those requirements to have lower thresholds, which I think is a very positive thing.
So it doesn't have to go to voters?
The actual project would have to go to voters, but the actual legislation, I believe, would be approved by a function of state law, unless there is a requirement for a statewide initiative or proposition to do that. And I can't answer that perhaps.
Yeah, and there'll need to be higher voting requirements for the legislature to adopt anything that would be an amendment to the Constitution. So I haven't studied that particular piece of legislation, but that's generally how that works. So it'd be a higher legislative action, you know, requirement.
So to pass it would be two-thirds of the legislature plus the governor's signature?
Correct, if it is in fact a constitutional amendment, which it probably is. And then if that passes, then, yeah, then it's a project by project after that.
Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Not so much a question. I just want to comment at how well laid out this was. It was very easy to read and it was very comprehensive. I found it very enlightening. I know we talk about things every month, but to have it all put together for us like this, you can really sort of follow the ball, if you will. So I thank you. That was, I just appreciate it.
Appreciate that. That's Mr. Sokol and his great staff.
I had a question or two. On the Hansey contract, which I'm really excited that we are continuing to invest in process improvement, I just want to get a little bit of understanding for it. It states in the memo that we've requested them to manage the process improvement initiative using a structured framework as opposed to solely focusing on process mapping events. So I didn't, what is that? I guess what is Hansey really going to be about? And how do they integrate or build off of lean?
On the Hansey consulting contract. So the way that we had done process improvements before is not a lot of structure, just in terms of doing just the process mapping and not too much on the planning end and not too much on the follow-up end. So what this does is it puts that kind of a framework in place where we're spending more time at the front end doing the planning and more time at the back end making sure that the recommendations are being implemented and sustained. And then fixing that timeframe so that the costs are better estimated as we go through each project. So that's what that means.
And then my related question was, we had the presentation about lean a meeting or two ago. And my understanding was we're going to try to expand lean into other parts of the county. So is that, is Hansey involved with that at all or is that different?
Yes, so they've actually, Hansey has developed the online training and that's almost done. That's the first piece that we had them on contract for. And then this next piece is to take on four process improvement projects for this year and evaluate that to see if we have the capacity to expand that some more, including using county staff to be able to do future projects. So for the next few months, the four projects are onboarding, offboarding employees. We're looking at the assessment appeals process improvement, the CalFresh renewal process, and then the agenda review process. So those are our four priorities for the next few months with Hansey. And then taking it internally and creating a group that can do this on a more regular basis.
I think it's just terrific we're continuing to focus on how we, on our processes. And again, a good use of one-time money. I had a technical question. I apologize. I hadn't had a chance to ask this in advance of the meeting, so I'll ask it now. On the radio funding, you know, we're doing this ATR and it's broken down as to where the funding comes from. It primarily comes from, you know, it's a total expenditure of two point something, two point two million or something. The primary monies come from the sheriff's office, but there's also about a hundred and sixty thousand from non-departmental ERAF reserves. So I guess my question is, since the sheriff's office reserve is pretty substantial and Prop 172 is pretty substantial, why does anything come out of non-departmental ERAF reserves?
Yeah, I'll answer that. First off, this ATR was because we, when we did the budget for 13, '14, ISD had budgeted the amount to come into their budget, but some of the departments had failed to do that. The, let me see if the ATR is on here. The part that the county, the non-departmental is picking up was other smaller agencies. I'd have to, I don't know if you actually have the ATR in the...
We can pick it up offline if needed.
Excuse me?
We can discuss it offline if needed.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it's all appropriate. I mean, I can talk to you about it.
All right, it sounds like it's somewhat a different, maybe a different, or subset.
It's not specifically county departments, but it's smaller local jurisdictions that are involved in the project. But I'll...
Okay, we can talk further about that. So my last kind of set of comments or questions goes to this one time, you know, the... You know, we're in a really fortunate situation right now. And just, you know, it gets better and better as best I can, you know, follow. I mean, the ERAF, of course, is exceptional. I think we were kind of thinking on eighty million, but now we're at a hundred and eight million. Now it's twenty, twenty-eight million. And, you know, our ongoing revenue sources, Measure A, Measure T, Prop 172, you know, those are showing really nice growth trends. Then, you know, there's a mention in the memo that our AB 109 money, AB 109 realignment money may increase. You know, the property taxes are, I think they're growing at the second fastest rate ever. So we're kind of hitting on all cylinders with revenue. So when we talk about, so the question then comes, well, what do you, you know, what do we do with this extra revenue? And the current proposal is to bond the entire cost of the jail, including the cost that we've already paid for. You know, we've paid for the land, we've paid for a bunch of the work. And, you know, bonding costs money because, of course, are the future interest payments. And, you know, one reason you bond is because the benefits are spread over time. But nonetheless, you know, it is a cost. So, you know, the question comes to my mind as well, should we bond that much? Do we need to bond that much? And then the question in my mind kind of grew larger into County Manager Malpe's point is, you know, maybe we ought to really think about using some of this money to further pay down the pension liability because that's a seven and a half percent rate of return. So, you know, I would like to talk to County Manager Malpe more about kind of these moving pieces. I guess I'd invite any, you know, if someone, a member of the Board here wants to join me, I'd be welcome to include someone if anyone would like to. I just think, just to kind of, you know, just think hard about it. Do we really bond all this jail? What are the other capital needs? How much of this pension liability do we really want to pay? And just so we can have a kind of a dialogue with County Manager to further our thinking. So I guess I'm asking for a volunteer if everyone's busy.
Just a quick comment, as I understand it, and you brought a good point about the seven point five percent growth in terms of SAMCero projections. But this is apparently a pretty good time to bond because the rates of interest are fairly low. And so I think that's one of the reasons that the County Manager is proposing that. I think your idea about potentially buying down other liabilities such as the, and putting money into perhaps the retirement system is probably, you know, it's a good idea.
Through the President and members of the Board, I think Supervisor Horsley was right. If you think of, we have this bucket of liabilities and we're either borrowing money for a new facility or we have the unfunded liability in the pension. I think the direction that the Board set last year is we'd like to shrink that pot of liabilities. So then it really becomes which liability do you want to shrink? Because they're all coming out of the same pot, in essence. I think probably the easiest for us and the most direct and appropriate would probably be the pension liability. But I think the choice is the Board's.
Yeah, again, so to that end, I look forward to talking to you more about it. And if someone on the Board want to...
We have an answer to your previous question about the one hundred and fifty-five thousand. There are a few small police agencies, BART comes to mind as one of them, that it would be good to have the interoperability of radio frequencies, but they're not part of our system, they're not going to pay anything. And the sheriffs requested that we put some money in from the General Fund to cover those. From a public safety standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world. So that's what that money's for.
Okay, that's helpful.
So... If I could just ask a question as we have a discussion, I think obviously this is something I think we all would want to hear about if we're going to make any changes. But as far as the bonds for the jail go, if we don't move forward with your recommendation, is it going to affect the timeline for that whole process for the bonds?
Unless we receive other direction from the Board, we're going to move forward in the way that I outlined in the presentation today. You're really, your final shot at that's the 25th, or actually your first shot, the only shot's the 25th. So, but all the planning that's going in preceding that is really based on the numbers that I gave you today. So if there's some changes, we had to know today.
Maybe, I mean, I certainly would be happy to meet with you or even meet separately to talk about these issues. I think, I would like to recommend that we move forward on the bonding for the jail and look at, you know, what we can do around the pension liabilities. Because I think in the public's mind as well, I think that's a huge cost. And I think if we do have extra money and we'd have to look at what we're talking about and still try to keep some decent reserves because today's good, we don't know what tomorrow brings. So unless anybody doesn't want to move forward with the bonding, I think there's been a lot of effort put into that. And I think that was a prudent way to go in this market.
Also to remind the Board that we're very likely to receive, probably by the end of June, a significant amount of additional money on the sale of Circle Star.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, on the bonding, I, you know, I'm going to think about it further. Would I talk to you, County Manager Malpe? Because again, it's, a lot of things have already been paid for. And so, but I may be the only one with that perspective, but I would like to talk to you about it further. But again, I don't know, again, I don't, I mean, I'm eager to speak with the County Manager and I guess I invite if someone wants to join me or people want to have their individual discussions, whatever is people are inclined to do. Would you...
No, I think Adrian, Supervisor Tessier is already...
I'm happy to join you or...
That she would be willing to.
All right.
I just want, I want to clarify if I may. The bonding for the jail, we approve on March 25th.
Correct.
Okay, so if you all have a meeting, could we have some of the results of your discussion by March 11th? So we have something to think about.
Of course. All right, then I, sorry, Supervisor...
I'm going to change subjects, so if you want to...
Yeah. Just to summarize then, Supervisor Tessier will have, we'll meet with the County Manager to talk about this issue broadly. And anything of note, we'll report back at the next meeting.
And just one quick comment. I'm assuming what the Board is not doing is formalizing by legislative action an ad hoc committee of the Board. It's more just an effort for Supervisor, Board President Pine and Supervisor Tessier to kind of just meet formally with the County Manager. That's what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to go back to the, how do you say it, Hansey?
Hansey?
I'm a big believer in this process and I think Raina mentioned one of the four projects was the assessment appeals process. But I'm just wondering if we couldn't get some information back or maybe have Hansey come and do a presentation so that the Board could just learn a little bit more about what this is all about and how this works and what departments are going through and the four proposed projects and so forth and so on. I think it would be very insightful, at least from my perspective.
Sure, we can get on the Board's agenda in the future. And it's been a very joint kind of team process for us as well. So we'd be happy to come in and talk to you about it.
Thank you. You ready, Horsley?
Just one more comment on that. One of the things we did talk about in the last budget hearings, I think we authorized some funds for planning and building to do a strategic process as well. So I don't know, it doesn't sound like they were included in the Hansey, but...
That was a different process.
Is it?
Yeah.
What, what is the status on that?
Um, Peggy's not in the audience right now. If we could, uh, talk to you offline and give you an update on that.
Can I just ask one question? I got three of the four projects, assessment appeals, CalFresh and agenda review. What was the second one?
Uh, there's also the onboarding, offboarding of employees.
What does that mean?
It's when, when we, um, when you hire, after you make an offer, and it's the entire process of bringing somebody on board, like getting their card key and their access to all kinds of places and their payroll setup. And, and then when they leave, to make sure that we're, we're terminating all the security and access. And so it's, it's, it's been inconsistent across the county, so we want to focus on that.
Thank you, those are all good areas. We do have one public speaker, um, and just, and one other comment I wanted to add on a different, different topic, um, which is the, you know, we're doing all these dashboards and, uh, I guess this is something for, just for the staff to think about is, you know, with the San Mateo County Saves Program and/or the HANSEE results, you know, lend themselves, it might lend themselves well to that, that dashboard type, type process. So we now have, uh, Martin Fox.
Good morning again, President Pine, members of the board, and my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe, Budget Director Sacco and County Council buyers. Please refer to the Governor's January Budget Proposal on the Expansion for Medi-Cal Benefits Discussion for Individuals Being Released From Prison and Jail, which states, and I quote, "The health system will be working with HSA probation and the Sheriff's Office to connect these clients to eligibility and services, but there are many state and local operational challenges to be worked through." This remark understates the case in the extreme, however, it also reveals that individuals being released from prisons and jails who are living with mental illness are just mentally ill, not stupid. And consequently, they are refusing to participate in the voluntary treatment-only services perpetuated by the intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures of the health system, which have the effect of promoting recidivism. The health system's failure to cooperate with other departments and adopt evidence-based solutions for mental health treatment resistance continues to undermine the recidivism reduction efforts of other departments in the Community Corrections Partnership, vote to implement Laura's Law, assisted outpatient treatment, and help overcome one of the local operational challenges of bringing Medi-Cal benefits to individuals being released from prisons and jails. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other items or comments on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to accept all the recommendations A through G.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item six is the update on the legislative program.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, we have met, um, with, um, several of the board members to discuss concerns and observations regarding, uh, the legislative, um, program. Uh, based on those discussions, the, um, new legislative priorities for two thousand fourteen, fifteen include, um, a statement regarding, uh, support of statewide water conservation efforts, um, support for proposals that explore alternatives to gas tax, uh, funding, alternatives to gas tax to support local transportation projects and for affordable housing, uh, projects. We've also revised the legislative program, uh, to include, uh, proposals and funding that would address the sea level rise, uh, concerns, uh, to support the elimination of family fees as previously mentioned for, uh, daycare centers and the elimination of language, um, that was in the original proposal, uh, concerning marijuana. Uh, with that, if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise we'd recommend your approval.
I would move approval of the, uh, two thousand fourteen legislative program.
Second.
Motion in second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I did have a notice from Mr. Fox, but, Mr. Fox, we've had a chance to comment on this section, so I'm going to decline that one. Um, item number seven is the County Manager's report.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, this is report number three. Um, we wanted to highlight the fact that on February eleventh, um, with Supervisors Horstley and Tessier in attendance, there was a news conference to announce the confidential hotline for victims of human trafficking. Uh, posters, um, have been or are in the process of being placed in bars, emergency rooms and urgent care centers and many other establishments, providing information regarding the hotline to encourage potential victims to seek assistance. Uh, also to let you know that on February twentieth, uh, our office, uh, hosted a seminar by the California Massage Therapy Council. Uh, one of the members, uh, by the way, is Deputy County Manager Calgi, uh, who serves on that council. Um, and they were, um, really very interested to learn about the revisions to the county's, uh, massage, um, ordinance. And in fact, many of the rules and regulations that they're incorporating into their policies are directly based on your ordinances, uh, in that regard. So you ought to feel very pleased that once again you're leading the state, uh, with respect to this very important, um, issue. I wanted to, um, bring the board up to date on Title IVE funding, uh, for the, um, probation department, yes.
Could you tell me what IVE it means?
Um, it's four, Roman numeral four, E. That's the code, the federal government code section that provides for funding, um, that would, um, reduce the risk of, uh, having to remove children from their home. Primarily that funding goes to the Human Services Agency, uh, through foster care, obviously, and, and, and programs that surround foster care that keep kids in, in homes. Um, but also our county and other California counties have used it for a number of years for children in the hall who, uh, we believe, um, can be returned home and thus not have to be placed in an out-of-home placement. Um, the county receives about one and a half to two million dollars a year. California is one of the few states that use, uh, Title IVE funds in this manner. And it came to the attention of the federal government that, uh, that, um, audited our program and, and one or two other California county's programs. And because it was an outlier, uh, funding was temporarily suspended for those programs. But due to the good work of the probation department, um, uh, with some modifications to the program, uh, the state and the federal government have determined that this is a permitted use of funds, albeit perhaps at a somewhat lower level, that can continue to be used. And so that's a pretty good outcome, I think, given the concern that we might potentially have lost all the funds. And, uh, and I wanted to compliment the probation department and the Human Services Agency for their work in, in preserving those funds. In terms of health and human services, um, uh, we continue to, um, work, the Human Services Agency continues to work to prior, prioritize community indicators and performance, uh, measures, uh, with the nonprofit community and our core providers. Um, uh, we continue, they're at various different, different levels, as you could well imagine, in terms of their sophistication and the use of these, uh, techniques. And we're, we're bringing all of them, uh, up. Some will be online faster than others, just because they have greater capacity. But all will reach the, uh, level that, that you will be provided with the information necessary to make future, uh, policy decisions, uh, based on sound, uh, information. Also, a safety net dashboard will be developed, um, for performance and sustainability plan for these organizations to include, uh, as indicated in the report, uh, a number of different, um, uh, metrics that, uh, will be used to evaluate and help strengthen, uh, these essential providers for community service in the county. As it relates to CalFresh, the Human Services Agency is developing, uh, new outreach strategies, uh, continue their momentum of enrolling, uh, additional eligible, uh, individuals in this important program. And to note that there's been a twenty-nine percent increase between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen in the number of enrollees, uh, in this county. The agency is also working to establish new partnerships with school districts and the health system and continuing our outreach contacts to, um, uh, ensure that everyone that's eligible for CalFresh and is in need of assistance receives that assistance. Uh, also, new marketing strategies and use of GIS mapping to prioritize our outreach efforts throughout the neighborhood are being planned, as well as to, um, use email and, um, uh, call reminders to clients to alert them when their renewal, um, requirements, uh, need, uh, need to be met in order to ensure that there's no interruption, uh, in services. Uh, we will continue our affordable outreach care, uh, efforts for the month of March. As you know, March thirty-first is the end of the first enrollment, uh, efforts. And I've noted a number of different locations where, uh, Human Services Agency will, um, uh, will be reaching out to the community. Uh, an update on social media, the county is working with Nextdoor, a private neighborhood-based social network to improve civic engagement and communications. Um, the county departments will be able to share important news, updates and services and programs. Uh, Nextdoor is a free, um, uh, app for residents, uh, and the county. And, um, uh, with Nextdoor, neighborhoods can establish, uh, and, and manage their own Nextdoor, uh, websites, um, to, uh, increase, uh, information sharing, uh, within neighborhoods. Uh, we intend to, uh, launch this service in the next few weeks and we'll keep the board apprised of the progress. Uh, in terms of Measure Say, Measure A Oversight Committee, their first meeting was on February fourth. Thank you to, uh, President Pine for attending that meeting to help orient, uh, the new, uh, committee members on their responsibilities. Daniel Quigg of Milbrae, uh, has been selected, uh, as the chair and Lynn Subunka has, of Daly City, uh, has been selected as vice chair. Uh, the committee's next meeting will be on May eighth at six P M. at the College of, uh, San Mateos Community Heights, uh, conference room. In new, uh, and upcoming events, uh, just several I want to highlight, um, uh, one at Skyline and Kenyatta College in partnership with Peninsula Works, they're offering training to laid-off workers in office management and customer service, uh, programs. Um, in terms of our, um, uh, selection of a legislative advocate for the state legislature, uh, on February tenth, uh, we widely distributed your request for proposals. The deadline for that response is on February twenty-eighth. And, um, uh, in, in, uh, with Supervisors Pine and Groom, along with, um, John Byer and Mike Calgi and, um, Connie Waresdrell, uh, the interviews will be conducted on March seventeenth and eighteenth. Uh, and we will be requesting approval of the new lobbying contact, contract on the twenty-second of April, with a one-year extension to begin May first. Finally, website migration to the new, uh, using the new Drupal platform. On February eighteenth, the web team launched, uh, additional websites for ag weights and measures, the Coroner's Office, Green Portal and Public Safety Communications. The board's website was submitted for review on February fourth. And the web team has been working with your individual offices to finalize the content and to train staff in the new Drupal system. Uh, the Board of Supervisors, Controller, County Manager's Office, Housing, Probation websites are tentatively scheduled to go live March seventh. If you have any questions, Mr. President, members of the board, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, Supervisor Tessier?
I just had a quick question, John, on that training opportunities, I assume that's for anyone in the county?
Yes.
It's not just, it's not county employees?
No, no, yes.
Okay, good.
Other questions? Again, we, uh, thank you for the report. It's, um, helpful to get these updates. If we now move, if I remember, to, uh, board member, board member reports. Should we start with Supervisor Horstley today?
Just wanted, wanted to adjourn in memory of, uh, Alison Happ. She passed away recently. She was a long-time person on the Real South Coast, um, and there was a celebration of her life at, uh, St. Beatty Church Hall and, uh, actually at, uh, Fort Hill Boulevard, uh, longtime, uh, resident on the coast side and, um, well knew her. And, um, sorry to see that she has passed on.
I'd like to announce, uh, that our ever-popular Take a Hike begins on March first, nine A M. Kick it off at Flood Park in, in Menlo Park. And then, um, there are, the entire list is on the county's website. But April fifth, we'll be in San Bruno, San Bruno Mountain. And I won't go any further because we probably won't remember them all by that time. But please join us on March first at Flood Park, nine A M. Uh, there will be a nice hike and a nice history lesson by the Rangers and the volunteers. And, uh, get to meet your neighbors and get to take a nice walk and, uh, enjoy all of our parks. Take a Hike runs from March until November.
Okay, great. Well, I had, I had a Take a Hike of sorts on Sunday. Um, uh, I, I hosted a group to get a sneak preview of the Devil Slide Trail. Uh, it's where I, Horstley had, uh, led one of these hikes, uh, in December. So it worked out great and we're about thirty or so people. I really thank the, the Parks Department for all their support and the foundation for their support. Uh, people loved it. And this is going to be the, uh, go-to place, uh, when it opened. So we were there, uh, we were there, it was actually kind of foggy, so it was a little different experience, but everyone had a, really had a good time. Supervisor Tessier?
Oh, okay. Um, I have, uh, several adjourned memories. I'm going to start with Kenneth Mulver. He is the father of one of our county employees in the OES Department, Brian Mulver's, uh, father. He passed away on February twentieth, twenty-fourteen, uh, and joins the love of his life Shirley Fraser Mulver, who passed away prior to that. Uh, he leaves behind his sons Kenneth, Scott, Stuart, Brian and daughter Suzanne. He was proud of his service in the Forest Service from nineteen thirty-six to nineteen forty. Uh, he was a proud member of the Flying Twenty Hotshots. Um, he became a clerk and assistant ranger at the Cascadia Ranger District. In nineteen forty, he left the Forest Service, uh, to work in the logging industry. Um, in December of nineteen forty-three, he went, was in World War Two, uh, and he continued in the military until his retirement in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, he, like his son, loved the bagpipes, the outdoors, astrology, geology, languages. And our hearts and prayers go out to their family. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Ed DiNatali. He passed away, uh, of cancer at the age of fifty-six. He, um, was born in San Francisco but raised in Daly City, moved to Vallejo in nineteen ninety. He was a plumber for thirty-seven years. He liked to hunt and fish and loved the great outdoors. He was part of a very large family, the DiNatali family, and, um, our sympathies go out to their family. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Lino Bob Borgello. He passed away on February seventeenth. Um, he was married to his soulmate Lillian. He was born in San Francisco also. Um, he was a father to Jeff, Debbie, Nancy and Gary Borgello. And he was a retiree of the Sunset Scavengers. And he had a beautiful smile, great sense of humor and was extremely loyal, uh, to his family and was very kind and, and just enjoyed life tremendously. Then I'd like to adjourn in memory of, uh, John Jack McDonough. He passed away on February fourteenth, surrounded by his, his wife and his daughters, Katie Sims and Jean Shot. Uh, he is the father-in-law of Gary Sims, who many of us knew from Seaton, now Kaiser. He was, uh, attended St. Anne's Grammar School, Ruden High School and San Francisco City College. He joined the Navy and was on the USS Wasps aircraft carrier. He also retired from the telephone company after thirty years. Uh, he will be sorely missed by his family and friends. In my last adjourned memory, I don't have a lot, uh, on this individual, although I did know him very well. His name is Jim Faulkner. He was the husband of Ann Faulkner, who had been, um, our administrative assistant at Bay Relations. And I have one other, um, and our sympathies go out to Ann and her family. Um, I'd also like to mention, we talked about D C P L A, which is the Daly City Public Libraries Associates. They are going to be having a St. Patrick's Day luncheon, Thursday, March thirteenth, which is going to be, the food is going to be cooked by a group from ecology. And it's, the lunch is open, if any of my colleagues would like to, uh, join us. Uh, we're going to obviously talk a lot more about what the Daly City Public Library Associates does, um, and introduce everyone to that. Um, so feel free to join us, it's in, at the Colma Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have an adjourned memory, but I would like to bring up, you'll remember, the North Fair Oaks parking study that was done back in August two thousand and thirteen. Um, I would like to ask that we perhaps have a study session on this parking study and strategy for North Fair Oaks, given the fact that, uh, middlefield, uh, configurations may change and zoning may change. And I'm just concerned about waiting till the last minute to. And I'm just concerned about waiting till the last minute to sort of revisit this parking analysis. So maybe we could schedule that at a future Board meeting. Thank you.
Very good. I think we will now adjourn to the closed session. County Council Buyers, you can report out for us.
Yes, gladly. Thank you, Mr. President. The Board met in closed session to discuss one item. It was a, it was a pending litigation matter of County of San Mateo et al. versus Richard Foal et al. And it was a discussion only, no, no final action was taken. Thank you.
All right, then we will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.